Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing item.
Hearing's item 9A, to be held 6:00 PM pursuant to California Elections Code Section 21628C. Sixth Public Hearing Regarding Adoption of Ordinance Amending Chapter 1.12, Revising the Boundaries of City Council Ward 1 through 7, Ward Map 5B. First reading of ordinance was March 16, 2022.
Thank you. And I see staff recommends council adopt the ward boundary ordinance for Ward Map 5B. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We'll provide just a brief summary of actions to date to set context for this. And Brian, I carry your assistant to the City Manager will do that for us.
Thank you. Welcome.
Great. Thank you, City Manager Clegg. Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council come before you for the last time on our schedule to go through the adoption of the city's new ward boundaries. So again, this is the last public hearing that we have as part of our process. My presentation will be relatively brief tonight. We'll go over the proposed map 5B, have time for public testimony, have council comment, and of course, council action. Just reviewing the timeline for the public record sake as well, we're now at that second to last row today, Wednesday, April 6, 2022, being the second reading of the ordinance adopting new ward boundaries. That last row there, once more, Sunday, April 17, 2022, is the technical deadline for adopting our new ward maps. It is a state deadline, but for our purposes, our final adoption will take place tonight. I will just make a few comments on the map that is under consideration, map 5B, just to quickly go through some of the history of where this map came from. Again, this was a map submitted by the public, initially entitled the Unity Map. It was then revised per council direction and provided through our consultant redistricting partners. So this map was developed in tandem with the community, in tandem with council comment and direction, following traditional redistricting guidelines, as well as communities of interest feedback. Going through each of the wards individually, just to get a sense of their population and their new boundaries. This is the new Ward 1 Boundary. Ward 2 Boundary. Ward 3 Boundary. Ward 4 Boundary. Ward 5 Boundary. Ward 6. And Ward 7. Do not have many other comments for you tonight, just that. The city will continue to maintain the city's redistricting website per the California Elections Code for the following 10 years. That is, of course, on the city's webpage under the City Clerk Department section of the website. All of this information in our process so far has been documented online as well. And just pause at the end of this process. As a staff member, as City Council, I hope that you'll allow me to just thank you as council for your direction. Thank our consultants, redistricting partners, for the work that they've done with us on this process so far. All of our map authors that we received feedback from, from our seven publicly submitted maps over this process. And of course, the community and the media for also spreading the word and being involved so far. Staff recommendation is for that council adopt the ward boundary ordinance for Ward Map 5B. That is the conclusion of my presentation and would open for the public hearing item.
Thank you, Ms. Carrier. We appreciate all of your efforts. Before I open the public hearing, I'm going to ask the interpreters to once again come forward to give instruction for those who may need their services to make a public comment. And while they're coming forward, I'm just going to remind the audience. I know that there's a lot of passion in the room about this topic, but just a reminder that we will ask you not to disrupt the meeting by clapping or by talking or cheering. That way, we'll just be able to conduct the meeting and we'll be able to hear everyone. Interpreters, would you please just give instructions to the public for public comment? Thank you.
When you are ready to give public comments, if you would like to make your public comment in either Spanish or Punjabi, we would be more than happy to come up to the podium alongside you and make sure that we give you the opportunity to speak in your language of preference. After you have spoken in your language of preference, we can interpret. We do ask that you maybe give two or three sentences at a time. Give the interpreter the opportunity to interpret and then continue with your comment. And we can keep doing that until you finalize your comments.
Thank you very much. And at this time, I will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker cards?
Mayor Go, we've received one speaker card against map 5B and 16 speaker cards in favor of map 5B.
Thank you. So now is the time for those who wish to speak in opposition of Ward Map 5B. So we'll ask you to come to the podium, identify yourself, and then proceed. Would you call the first public speaker, please?
Reverend Angelo Frazier.
Welcome.
Mayor, City Council, Pastor Angelo Frazier. This is a summation of thought. Right before our very eyes, the racialization of America. The KKK would be thrilled with this new progressive tactic. Redistricting is resegregation under the threat of possible litigation. Gone is the time-honored principle of assimilation. Gone is the issue of character and self-determination. Gone is the diversity of thought not based on color. Gone is the ability of one race to represent another race. I have seen this before. I have lived this before, and I fear it's returning. The very ones who are voting for this are actually voting themselves out of offices. This is ultimately about power, control, and using race as a shield to hide their objective. Tell them, this is how it works. Tell them they are marginalized. Tell them that they can't do it on their own. Tell them that they can only be represented by people who look like them. Tell them to always be offended when it's not about race. The polite racism of white liberals penned by Martin Luther King has now become made universal. And the systemic racism is the catch-all phrase for which every ill is manifested. And yet, God is in control. His truth will reign, and all lies that are exalted and decorated with human wisdom must find their end someday. Booker T. Washington said this, "A lie doesn't become the truth. A right doesn't become wrong. Evil doesn't become good just because it's accepted by the majority." I just want to encourage you. I came out of segregation. I know what it looks like. This is resegregation once again. When I came to this city 30 years ago, I didn't look for a black community or a white community or an Asian community. I just looked for a community to be in, and that's what it should be about. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Frazier. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please. Do we have any others in support?
Mayor Go, that was our only speaker in support.
Thank you. And now... In opposition, I'm sorry. And now, Madam Clerk, now is the time for those who wish to speak in support of Ward Map B. Madam Clerk, would you please call the speakers?
Mayor Go, I'm going to call the first three speakers. Dolores Huerta. Jeff Heinley. Lori Pisanti.
Thank you. And it's just a reminder to all, we have a number of people who'd like to speak tonight, so we'll just ask you to be as succinct as possible. And then just make sure you raise and lower the mic so we can hear you. Welcome.
Mayor Go and City Council members, my name is Dolores Huerta, and I just want to commend and thank you for giving the preliminary approval to the Unity Map 5B because I think it is going to bring our community closer together and, of course, give representation to many people that have been left out of representation here in the city. So just thank you very much and hoping that we will give the final approval to the Unity Map 5B. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta. Next speaker, please.
Jeff Heinley, followed by Lori Pisanti, then Nadine Escalante.
Welcome, Mr. Heinley.
Jeff Heinley, retired city first responder. Hi, thank you, Mayor, Council, staff, for all the hard work and the time vested into this process. I wanted to see this across the finish line because I know it's very important to a very large, significant portion of our community. A community that is very diverse, that is looking for representation. And I just wanted to be here in support of them, just like I was in support of them for 35 years as a first responder. I really care about this community. I care about all of you. And I think this is a fair map. I think it's a just map. And I want to just express my deepest and sincerest thanks for all of the hard work that everybody has been doing to make this map as pure and as righteous as possible. And so I'm not going to run out of time this time, Mayor, so you won't have to kick me out. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Heinley. Next speaker, please. And could we find a seat for the gentleman in the back, please? Ms. Pisanti, if you'd just wait one minute so we can get everyone seated, please.
Following Ms. Pisanti, we have Nadine Escalante.
Just going to ask everyone who's standing, except the officers, to please sit down. And if there's an empty seat, just raise your hand.
And following Ms. Escalante, we have Raji Brar.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Lori Pisanti, and I am the Director of Civic Engagement for the Dolores Huerta Foundation. We have been helping folks to learn about redistricting for well over a year now. And the community has not missed a single hearing, a single community education session, a single opportunity to raise their voices. And I think just even in seeing the interpreters come up and at a Bakersfield City Council meeting, speak in Punjabi, speak in English, speak in Spanish, is one of the most beautiful things I have ever seen. And the comments among people around me tonight and at the last hearing that they had never seen this before and how wonderful it was to see. And the leadership that I believe map 5B has generated in its creation is the same strength of leadership that we can count on for the next 10 years. And so with that, I yield the remainder of my time to the amazing community that clearly is here tonight en masse and is committed to the future together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pisanti. Next speaker, please. Welcome.
Nadine Escalante, good evening, everybody. I just wanted to say thank you for considering map 5B on behalf of me as a mother, on behalf of my two daughters that are at home. I had to bribe my daughters with dinner from Bill Lee's in order to be at this meeting because I was supposed to be cooking. But my daughters are sacrificing tonight for me to be here on behalf of this map. This is going to affect my daughters, who are 14 and 18, their future. I'm here because this is so important to my children's future in this county and in this city. The role that all of us play for our children is imperative tonight. And what you guys are doing for your children, for your grandchildren, is imperative for tonight. We are making history for Bakersfield, and we have always been in negative history in Kern County and Bakersfield. Let's do something positive for once. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Escalante. Next speaker, please.
Raji Brar, followed by Rick Judge, followed by Gurcharan Singh.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Go, council members. My name is Raji Brar, and I'll take this opportunity to thank the City Council for supporting map 5B. Our community truly appreciates you taking the time to listen to and understand all of our concerns. I cannot begin to tell you how elated the community is with this historic decision. And for me personally, as Nadine mentioned too, as a parent whose children are watching this democratic process unfold before their very eyes, it's very encouraging to see elected officials do what they are entrusted to do, and that is to be the voice for their people. So we appreciate what you have done so very much. And Sangatnu, I want to tell you...
Thank you, Ms. Brar. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Just a reminder that we don't allow applause. I know you're very passionate about it, but that's just our protocol here. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor Go, fellow council members and staff. My name is Rick Judge, and I am here in support of map 5B. And I just have a few quick comments. And all I would like to say is, I would like to express my gratitude and my sincere thanks to this council for moving this map forward. We are all so proud to be here tonight, witnessing this historic event. This map hearing has been witnessed by Sikhs worldwide on news being broadcast throughout our community. And I want to personally thank you for supporting the wishes of your constituents and want to say thank you for keeping the Sikh community whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Judge. Next speaker, please.
Gurcharan Singh, followed by Harveen Kar.
Welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name is Gurcharan Singh. I am a longtime resident of Bakerfield and president of Bakerfield Sikh Punjabi Senior Cityion Association. I am here to thank you for your support of map 5B. As a resident and advocate for Punjabi Sikh senior cityion, I appreciate that you are keeping communities together. Thank you for your time and support for map 5B. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Next speaker, please.
Harveen Kar, followed by Granur Kar.
Thank you. Ms. Kar, would you just wait until we have our guests seated?
No problem.
Welcome.
Thank you. Vahiguru Jika Khalsa, Vahiguru Jiki Fateh. Good evening, members of the council and my beloved Sangatan community. What an amazing turnout again, right? Two times is a charm. My name is Harveen Kaur, and I'm a lifelong resident of Eastside Bakersfield. And after graduating from Highland High School, I went on to UCI to further my education. And after three and a half years, my education was halted due to COVID, and I returned very so happily home. And after many long years of dredging, oh, I gotta go back home, I have to leave school, I was finally happy to return home to my family after so long. And, you know, the return was ecstatic, and it was a homecoming like no other. So once I arrived back home to our beautiful Bakersfield, I was eager to get engaged and involved with our community. I was ready to get in the streets. Bakersfield is where I was born and raised. It's where my community is. It's where my family resides, my foundation, my home, my heart. And, you know, as you can see, we are a community that stays united and supports one another relentlessly. So as many of our council members and mayor know, this past Sunday, the Sikh community hosted the Bakersfield Vaisakhi Nagarhi Thin after two long years. We celebrated the birth of the khalsa, our community, the power of unity, and the passing of map 5B. We are extremely delighted and, of course, very... We cannot express our gratitude to our City Council for prioritizing the needs of the community, keeping the Punjabi community together, creating three VRAs, and creating a historical change for the Bakersfield community. Thank you so much for all the hard work in building a better Bakersfield, a Bakersfield where we stand together and we embrace our collective power and uplift one another. Thank you for your time. Good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Kar. Next speaker, please.
Granur Kar, followed by Rajit Singh, followed by Raj Paul Singh.
Welcome.
Hi. My name is Granur Bat. I live in Ward 7 and attend Ridgeview High School. Before continuing, I would like to thank the council members for voting map 5B and deciding to keep the Sikh community united. I was born and raised here in the heart of Bakersfield. And growing up, I've always been surrounded by people from my community. And I'm proud to say that I attend a school where there's the highest population of Sikh students. It brings me great joy to see the great diversity at my school and seeing everyone get along. Also, seeing so many faces from the Sikh community at my school makes me feel at home. I have always grown up amongst the beautiful Sikh community of Bakersfield. And it's very important to me that my community stays united in the future. Because I want to live here in Bakersfield for many more years to come in life. And I want to see my community united in the many years to come, like it is united today. I want my younger sisters to also see our Sikh community united while growing up like how I saw our community united from a young age. So therefore, I would like to make a humble request to our council members to stay firm on their decision to choose map 5B. I would like to thank everyone, especially Mayor Go, for giving me the opportunity to speak today. Thank you once again. Vahiguru Jika Khalsa, Vahiguru Jiki Fateh.
Thank you, Ms. Kar. Next speaker, please.
Rajit Singh, followed by Raj Paul Singh, followed by Jatinder Singh.
Welcome.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Go and to my Sangat behind me. My name is Ranjit Singh, and I am speaking here today thanking you for adopting Plan B. We ask that you please do not divide us. As a community, as these district lines is what keeps us whole. Keeping us together is a means for equity and community empowerment. I see it in my home, my neighborhood, as I drive through the streets of southwest Bakersfield and in my place of work as a small business owner, growing up in America, not seeing many like me when I was my daughter's age. Compared to how our community has grown today is beyond what I can imagine. And I am proud to say I have a strong community behind me. Us staying united and constant support of one another is what makes this community so special. Thank you for time and Vahiguru Jika Khalsa and Vahiguru Jika Khalsa.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Next. We have a request for a two-minute break, so if you just hold steady right there. We just need a quick... And I would recommend that you stay in your seats unless there's a real reason you need to get up. Would you all please sit down and let's continue the meeting? We're just going to ask for everybody to be seated so that we can continue. We're going to run out of time. Normally, there's a 15-minute block, but because of this only happening every 10 years, I'm going to let all the speakers who have already turned in cards, but we're not going to accept anymore because I know we're going to be over time. But Madam Clerk, now would you call the next speaker, please?
Raj Paul Singh, followed by Jatinder Singh, followed by Himut Kar.
Welcome.
Vahiguru Jika Khalsa, Vahiguru Jiki Fateh. As council member and our mayor, Kian Go, thank you so much for your support of 5B. And I, my name is Raj Paul Singh. I live here in six, Award Number Six. And I was working with the Kasan Morcha group when the Kasan Morcha came. Just so you just like to support 5B. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Next speaker, please.
Jatinder Singh.
And if it's possible, while somebody's speaking, let's not have anybody enter the facility. Mr. Singh, would you just wait a minute until everyone's seated, please?
Hello, Mayor.
Mr. Singh? Just wait one minute till everyone is seated.
Sorry for that.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, City Council and City staff. My name is Jatinder Singh, and I am longtime resident of Bakersfield with a career in transportations. Thank you so much for listening to our community and voting for map 5B. I am proud to know my children with life in a community that is kept together. We are so proud to be here tonight to see history happen. Thank you to council for supporting the Sikh community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Next speaker, please.
Himut Kar, followed by Rupi Kar, followed by Surjit Dalwal.
Thank you, Ms. Kar. Would you just wait a minute till our guests are seated?
Of course.
Welcome.
Hi. Hello, esteemed mayor and council members. It's nice to meet you. My name is Himuth Gordchathe. I am a freshman in high school, a member of the Punjabi community, and a member of the Jakara movement. Thank you for continuing to support map 5B. We are grateful beyond belief. We brought our cacophony of rejecting map 2C to the ears of you officials. We yelled, we screamed, and we did what we felt was right. Our community is one that feels and thinks. A human is also a combination of the two. What I mean to say is that we are one. We are a people that refuse to be separated, then, now, and for years to come. Getting involved in my community was the happiest thing that ever happened to me. I look into the crowd and I see me, my people, strangers in the general sense, but family to me. If Washington said, "We shall all sit under our own vine and fig tree," then I shall bring my people with me to what is mine. I'm sure anyone here would do the same. Please continue to support and advocate for the adoption of map 5B. Keep our communities together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kar. Next... Next speaker, please.
Rupi Kar, followed by Surjit Dalwal, followed by Deep Singh.
Good evening.
Welcome. Go ahead and raise the mic just a little, please. Thank you.
Good evening and to the Sangat. Hi, I'm Rupnith Gaur, and I go to Independence High School, and I'm currently a senior. I plan to attend UC Davis in the fall. I have lived in Bakersfield basically my entire life, and I want to thank the City Council members for voting for map 5B to prioritize the needs of not only the Punjabi community, but all minority communities. Ever since I was a kid, I remember my parents taking me and my siblings, my cousins, all my friends to the Garhadara, or Sikh temple, on Stein and Wilson roads. Every Sunday morning, and we would do Girtan or Singh Parirs. I learned my Punjabi by going to the Sikh temple. And then years later, I was able to use what I learned to teach other younger kids how to read and write Punjabi or how to do Girtan. I was able to help my community every week by serving food or helping teach. And along the way, I met some really great people. Thank you for keeping my community united. Good evening and Vahiguru Jika Khalsa, Vahiguru Jiki Fateh.
Thank you, Ms. Kar. Well, next... Next speaker, please.
Surjit Daliwal, followed by Deep Singh.
Welcome, Mr. Daliwal. Can you just wait until our guest is seated, please? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and council members and the staff. And my name is Surjit Singh Daliwal. I'm a law resident of Bakersfield, and also have businesses over here in Bakersfield. And I'm here just to thank you for supporting the council members on the 5B, and also here for this evening, for this historic evening, actually, that I'll be a part of that, the Plan 5B is gonna be passing. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Daliwal. Next speaker, please.
Deep Singh, followed by Letizia Perez.
Welcome.
Esteemed mayor, city council members, community members throughout Bakersfield. Waai Gruji Ka Khalsa, Waai Gruji Ki Fateh. The finish line is finally here. You know, this has been a historic and an ongoing process. I want to, from the bottom of my heart, really appreciate all of you for taking the time, listening to so many community members, participating, providing feedback, and really trying to do what's best for Bakersfield for the next 10 years and providing a map that really listens to community and tries to, as best as possible, tries to engage people with something for the future. I just wanted to, from the bottom of my heart, really thank council members I've had the chance to continuously engage with, who had opportunities for me to be able to speak with, those even of other opinions. Sometimes we landed similarly, sometimes we didn't, but this has just been an inclusive process that I really wanted to appreciate all of you for all your hard work. I did want to address just one point. I know there were some speakers that felt that this particular MAP 5B introduced in some ways segregation, but it could be nothing further than the truth. In fact, by no means do maps are determined, there's no ethnic one group that could actually determine the outcome in any election, and nor will it ever be the case. Council member Gray had shared before that, you know, really, we're talking about values. And MAP 5B was just meant that communities can bring their voices together, really to share those values that make Bakersfield so unique and such a special place for all. Again, wanted to thank you all from the bottom of my heart, to all our friends on the council, to of course, the hardworking staff that has been, you know, really kind of working this process, and of course, to the mayor. Appreciate you all and look forward to continuing to stay in touch. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Welcome, Supervisor.
Mayor Go, thank you for the opportunity tonight. It was really an incredible delight to be with you and other members of this body on Sunday as we celebrated this incredible community that has, in my life for a decade and a half, been absolutely family to me and so many others in the Fifth District and so many members of this community. So I have to be honest when I say, when I look out here, I see me too. That's the truth. This is a beautiful community, and by that, I mean Kern County. I have to be honest when I say that observing what this body did a few weeks ago has left me in a state of shock. I was not expecting it. I was hoping for the absolute best, but to see what happened amongst this body really, really moved me at my deepest core, at my deepest held values as an American, and as a person in this community that believes that it is beautiful in all of its diversity and all of our diverse opinions and ideas. Andre and Eric, hats off to you. Outstanding work. I am so proud of you. To the gentlemen here, Mr. Parlier and Bob, who I had a chance to spend some time with on Sunday, and express my gratitude to you for doing in this community what I think is brave, courageous, and absolutely consistent with the American spirit. You know, American democracy is unique. American democracy is exceptional. It is different. It's a bold, courageous act, and it takes people of your communities in particular, right, of standing and saying, "This is okay. We don't have to be afraid." The American process is best when it is inclusive and absolutely consistent with the pillars of this country. So I want to express to you two specifically, thank you for giving me real-life today examples to brag around the state of California about the beautiful conservatives in this community that are working alongside communities that have many, many differences. It's what makes this place so beautiful. And I want to say to you from the bottom of my heart, thank you. I had such a nice time with all of you on Sunday. I look forward to more of that. But this is our community. This is one community, and I'm happy to see me as I look at you today.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you. God bless you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jenali Furman, followed by Jason Wharton, followed by Traco Matthews.
Hello, Honorable...
Welcome.
Oh, hi, Honorable Mayor and City Council, as well as City Staff, City Manager Clay and City Attorney. My name is Jenali Furman. I'm not here on anybody's behalf except my own as a resident of Ward Four, as a proud resident of Ward Four. I'm here on behalf of myself, my daughter, my husband, my in-laws that immigrated here from Peru, and my family that immigrated here from Guatemala and El Salvador. The reason why my father immigrated from El Salvador over 30 years ago is because of democracy. He wanted to be here in USA where we actually had a voice, and I'm proud to be a first generation here actually using my voice. I'm here in support of the Unity Map, MAP 5B. As I look into the crowd, I see representatives from Ward Seven, Councilmember Parlier, Ward Six, Councilwoman Patty Gray, Ward Three, Councilmember Weir, and everybody else. This is the city of Bakersfield, and we need our maps to represent us, interest groups from the Black community, interest groups from the Punjabi community and Sikh community, and the Latino community, and all the minorities. Because if you look around, I moved to the city of Bakersfield 20-plus years ago, and it's nothing from what it looks like now, today. I am so happy and so proud that now Latinos are a huge majority here in the city of Bakersfield, and so we have the right to have that representation on City Council. So I ask you and I urge you, look out at everybody here today. We have spoken. We had one person against MAP 2B. So please, don't vote for yourselves, except for your people, your constituents that are here. Please vote for unity. Thank you so much for the honor.
Thank you, Ms. Furman. Next speaker, please.
Jason Wharton, followed by Traco Matthews.
Welcome.
All right. So here we meet again. Basically, I'm gonna keep it short. I just want to thank you once again for allowing us to bring MAP 5B to the table and really pushing it through. And just like you guys, I know is gonna stand firm on allowing this map to go through. I'm standing firm on what I originally said with, you know, I'm a part of this community. I've lived in this community, community over 12 years. My children went through elementary, junior high, and high school in this community, and it's been nothing but open arms, love, and unity. So like I said, I'm gonna keep it short. Please stand firm on keeping this map going through, and the unity is what really, really matters, because for the next 10 years, we're gonna have so much unity that Kern County can't help but grow in the right manner, in the right way. Like another speaker said, Bakersfield can get there. People do say things, you know, negative about Bakersfield when it comes to race and racism, and this right here will show that we're not racist, and that we are for family, we are for community, and we are for unity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wharton. And the final speaker, please. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, distinguished members of the council. I was not planning to speak tonight, but I did want to briefly respond to something that my friend Pastor Angelo Fraser said. He said, "This is about segregation and regression. Nothing could be further from the truth." I think Exhibit A is all of the 20 speakers that you have seen tonight of every racial group represented in our city, in our community, in the war that we are talking about, Ward Seven. The 30 speakers that you saw three weeks ago, diversity. Diversity is something that should be celebrated as a nation. It is what has made us great. It is not segregation, but truly a valuing of the diverse voices of all of those, you know, diverse people in our community who we know have God-given voices that must be heard, that must be valued, that must be respected. Thank you for doing what was right three weeks ago, moving it forward. Please have the courage to stand firm on what is right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. And at this time, is there anyone who wishes to rebut in opposition of Ward MAP 5B? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to rebut in support of Ward MAP 5B? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna try and avoid getting emotional like I did last time, but still, this is just such a beautiful turnout, and truthfully speaks to our democratic values. This is truly what democracy looks like. And I'm so proud and honored to sit on this dais and represent every single one of you and to embrace you, and to hope that you come back for future council meetings, because it's refreshing to see the public engage in this way. This is the way that it should be. And so I want to personally extend that invitation. We will have our budget meeting in the next couple of months, so please do come back. As it relates to redistricting, I want to take my hat, tip my hat off to Ms. Brianna Carrier, her entire team, for enabling us to engage in this democratic process. And thank you to our redistricting partners, who I don't think are in the room tonight, for making sure that your voices were heard and you had an opportunity to go ahead and provide input and feedback for our council. Ms. Escalante, I don't know if she's still in the room, but she is absolutely right. Tonight is absolutely historic for our community, for our city, for our own families, and for the young lady who's sitting right in front of her. Whenever you're giving public speaking lessons, please invite me. I have a few things to learn from you. Well done. But truly, tonight is absolutely historic, and it is my honor tonight to stand with the Punjabi community, to stand with our Latino brothers and sisters, our African-American community, and everyone in the city of Bakersfield. As we create three VRAs, we do more than just protect ourselves from liability, but we pass MAP 5B, a map that truly instills pride in all of our communities. And with that, I would like to make the motion tonight to approve MAP 5B. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to begin tonight by thanking everyone who, again, showed up tonight and who has been a part, a very influential, important part of this whole process. Your involvement, your letters, your texts, your participation here was significant and important and influential, and I just want to thank all of you for participating in this process. You know, I've been in elected office now for 12 years, six years on the Bakersfield City School Board, six years now on the Bakersfield City Council, and I can honestly say March 16th was the proudest moment I've had in all those 12 years. And it speaks to what we're doing in the city and the future of our community. I just want to do something, because there was a comment earlier that still bothered me. I want to ask everyone who supports MAP 5B to please stand up. Colleagues, this does not look like segregation. This looks like diversity. This looks like inclusion. This looks like a richer Bakersfield and a more prosperous future for all of us. And there's all these young ones out here right now, elementary school students, junior high students, raise your hand, high school students. We're doing this for them, and we're building a better Bakersfield for all of them so that they can be more included, and this is not even a debate in 10 years from now. That's my hope. You can all be seated. I want to thank you.
Thank you, Count... Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez.
So I just want to finish up, I'm sorry, Mayor, just want to finish up my comments by thanking, joining Councilmember Arias and thanking Brianna Carrier for all of her support, but also I want to recognize Vidi Gayardo King with the City Attorney's Office, who's actually led the effort from the legal end, and she's done a tremendous job. So thank you so much, Vidi.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to pile on, I guess, and say that I've received overwhelming positive feedback since the last meeting, and the community is very excited about moving forward from this point, and that there's no doubt in my mind that a community that works together is much stronger, and this map helps the community work together. An engaged community is better. And so I think we celebrate all members of the community when we work together, and so I thank you, and it's a great time.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gray.
Well, I want to start out tonight by thanking every one of you to come. It is a wonderful thing to see people participating in the democratic system, and we are very blessed in this country. We could all be in the Ukraine right now, standing in line for a scrap of food, so I'm very blessed to be here. As you know, I did vote against the map, but I want to tell you from the bottom of my heart, I'm not voting against a people or a people group. I felt in my own heart that the other map was the better map. But I do want to tell you that I heard tonight, again, from someone that finally there was going to be fair representation for everyone. And so I'm not trying to throw cold water on your party, but I want to just remind you that I was elected in a majority Latino ward with three men of color running against me, because as Dolores Wharton said last week, people vote for who they want to vote for. So I would hope, I've heard that people are thrilled, our other council members, they have had good feedback. But I want to remind you that this group of people in this room is a beautiful group, and I'm so thankful these seats are filled, and I pray that they continue to be filled. But there's 400,000 people in this city, 400,000, and I've heard from many people that they have very real concerns and are fearful that we will be divided instead of united. So the feedback I'm getting is a little bit different, and it's coming from all different skin colors and backgrounds. It's not just white, Caucasian men or women. It's from people of all different backgrounds. So I just want to tell you that I am here tonight to do, to make the decision that I feel is the best decision, but it is not against anyone. It's not for anyone. It's just because I felt that the other map was a better map. And I pray that as we have focused this map so much on race, ethnic background, and color, that I pray that that does not be, end up being a divider instead of a uniter. I am here from the bottom of my heart to serve every color of every creed, and there will never be a time that I would ever turn anybody away because I didn't like their politics or their creed or their color. So I want you to know, I am here to serve all. I think that's the way the Lord would want me to do, and I pray that everyone in this room can feel the same, that we are united and not divided. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this is called the Unity Map. You can call it the Punjabi Map. You could easily call it the Chamber of Commerce Map, or the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Map, or the Board of Realtors Map, or even the Associated Building and Contractors Map. If not in full support, they were not... If not in full support, they were not in opposition. Now, I've had the pleasure of serving under two wonderful mayors, city of Bakersfield. Our current mayor, Karen Go, a wonderful representative of the city, but I started under Harvey Hall. And when I first came on board, I met with Harvey in his office, now the mayor's office right over here, and he said, "Chris, you know, on the close ones, you know, just do the right thing." And Harvey had a motto, in fact, he ran on that motto, it was called "Unity in the Community." And Harvey is definitely on my mind right now and I'm staying with 5B. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Are there any other requests to speak? Seeing none, you have a motion.
Motion is approved. With Council... With Council... With Councilmember Weir and Councilmember Gray voting no and Councilmember Freeman absent.
Thank you. And that concludes that section. If there's anyone who would like to leave at this point before we go on with the meeting, you're welcome to do so right now. Thank you for your participation.